Good evening and welcome to the November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Education Annual Meeting. The meeting is now called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the agenda of Monday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Education Annual Meeting be approved to set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
President Tominski?
First on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the October nineteenth special meeting and the October twenty-third regular meeting. Are there any questions regarding the minutes? All those in favor of approving as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, I'll turn the meeting over to Ryan for the abstract of the school election.
Esteemed Board of Education, I present to you the certified abstract of elections as issued by Lynn County Boards of Supervisors for the regular school election that was held on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. As part of the election, it declares the following candidates be elected for a term of four years each or until their successor is appointed and qualified. Director of District One, David Tominski; Director of District Four, Caitlin Byers; Director at Large, Cindy Garlock; Director at Large, Jennifer Newman. Do we have a motion to approve the abstract?
So moved.
Do we have a second? This is a roll call. Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
President Tominski?
Aye. And before we adjourn our meeting, we'd like to take a moment and recognize Director Mersbrack for his service to the Cedar Rapids Community School District, and especially to this Board of Directors. With no further business, our annual meeting is now adjourned. The organizational and regular meeting will be called to order shortly. Thank you.
Five thirty-two? So. All right. I'd like to call the Board of Educational, Organizational, and Regular Board Meeting for Cedar Rapids Community School District on November twentieth to order. The next item on the agenda is to approve, uh, next item of business is to approve the agenda for November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have a motion?
I move that the agenda of Monday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Education Organizational and Regular Meeting be approved to set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Do we have a second?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye. All those, uh, not in favor, same sign. All right. The next order of business is the abstract certificates of the election to directors and to elect them and their oath's office. So, the abstract of elections was certified by the Lynn County Board of Supervisors for the regular school election held on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. And we will present those now for Director of District One, David Tominski; Director of District Four, Caitlin Byers; Director of At Large, Cindy Garlock; and Director At Large, Jennifer Newman. So, if you all would be willing to stand up and take our oath's of office? By raising your right hand. Do you, Director Tominski, Director Byers, Director Garlock, Director Newman solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of the Board of Education in Cedar Rapids Community School District as now and hereafter required by law? If so, say yes. Congratulations. The next item of business on this evening's agenda is the election of a presiding officer of the Board of Education. Board of President shall be a member of the Board of Directors and shall be elected by majority vote of the Board at its organizational and odd number of years and at, or at its annual meeting and even number of years. To serve one term of office, Board members elected to the offices of the Board will take an oath of office. At this time, I would like to open nominations for the position of the President of the Board of Directors.
I nominate Cindy Garlock.
Are there any other nominations? If not, I officially declare the nominations closed at this time, and I'll ask you to vote by roll call. Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Byers? Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Humbles? Director Newman? Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Garlock. You have been elected to serve as the President of the Cedar Rapids Board of Education. Please come forward for your oath of office. Do you, Director Garlock, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of the President of the Board of Directors of Cedar Rapids Community School District in the County of Lynn, State of Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? Respond by saying aye, will.
Aye.
Congratulations on your election. I will now allow you all to switch places.
Oh, okay.
And turn the meeting over to newly-elected President Garlock.
Thank you, Ryan. Before we proceed with the next agenda item, I'd like to thank my fellow Board members for entrusting me with this awesome responsibility to fulfill the presidency. I appreciate your support, and I look forward to our continued work. On behalf of the Board, I also want to formally welcome Director Byers to the ranks, Caitlin. We know you'll make us all better Board members with your thoughtful and passionate support of the staff and students of the district. Thank you for making a commitment to public education and the advocacy of our students, staff, and community. So, welcome. Moving on with our agenda, up next is the election of a Vice President of the Board of Education. At this time, I'd like to open nominations for the position of Vice President of the Board of Directors.
I nominate Director Dave Tominski.
Are there any other nominations? If not, I officially declare the nominations closed. This will be a roll call vote.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Is she gone?
Director Borchardine? Okay. Director Roundtree?
Aye.
President, uh, President Garlock. It's gonna, it's gonna take a while. I just got it down.
Congratulations, Director Tominski. You've been elected to serve as Vice President of the Cedar Rapids Board of Education. Oh, please come forward for your oath of office.
Do you, Director Tominski, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of the Vice President of the Board of Directors of Cedar Rapids Community School District in the County of Lynn, State of Iowa, as now and hereafter as required by law? Respond by saying aye, will. Congratulations, Vice President.
Ryan, do you have anything to report about regarding the annual conflict of interest statements?
Yes, thank you, President Garlock. Per Board Regulation two oh one dot six, it is the responsibility of each Board member to be aware of an actual or potential conflict of interest. It is also the responsibility of each Board member to take the action necessary to eliminate such a conflict of interest. Should a conflict of interest arise, a Board member should not participate in any take, in any action related to the issue from which the conflict arose. A Board member shall disclose and abstain from voting in any item that may be a potential conflict of interest. Each Board member shall sign a conflict of interest disclosure form at the annual or organizational board meeting and record, and a record of said form will be noted in the school board minutes. And I will pass those out now and allow you time to fill them out.
I'll now turn the meeting over to Superintendent Grover for her report.
President Garlock, and congratulations to you and Director Tominski for your new appointments tonight. And also, just a thank you to our entire Board for your service and a heartfelt welcome to Director Byers. I look forward to working with all of you as we continue to propel for the vision of the school district. Just a few highlights here as we go into the holiday week. So, just a friendly reminder to our families that there is no school this week from Wednesday, November the twenty-second through Friday, the twenty-fourth for Thanksgiving break. District offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, and there will be no district newsletter next week. We hope everyone has a happy and safe Thanksgiving break, and we look forward to welcoming students back when classes resume on Monday, November the twenty-seventh. Speaking of Thanksgiving, today Kennedy High School Student Government assembled over sixty-five Thanksgiving baskets for Kennedy students and families in need this holiday season. Kennedy's teachers and staff will personally deliver the baskets to the families today and tomorrow. The baskets included everything needed for a full Thanksgiving meal. All of the food was donated by Kennedy's families and the class of two thousand and twenty-seven. What a feel-good way to kick off the given season. Earlier this month, several of our schools across the district held Veterans Day celebrations to thank our community veterans. At Cedar Rapids Community School District, we want to instill in our students the importance of showing gratitude to those who protect our freedom. A few highlights was at Johnson Steam Academy, they held their Veterans Parade and Assembly. I did get a chance to attend that one. I loved hearing the students sing a song for each of the branches. That was a nice tribute. Grantwood Elementary's, I guess is, is their show choir comprised of fourth and fifth grade students. They had the opportunity to sing at Mount Vernon Road High V's Annual Veterans Breakfast. I heard a lot of great things about our students at that breakfast. And the veterans in attendance at the breakfast, they also received a thank you card created by the students. And also, the fourth and fifth grade students at Harrison Elementary School also held a program and a concert to show their appreciation to those who served. And the Metro Greenhouse is now open. They celebrated the completion of their new greenhouse and outdoor classroom space on November the first. They held a reception for the community partners who helped make the project possible along with a ribbon-cutting ceremony and a community open house. Those in attendance got a chance to plant flowers and vegetable seeds that will be, I guess, the first plants the students grow in the new learning space. The people put their names on there as we can go back and check on, we'll see. Okay. Over at Franklin's, um, at Franklin Middle School, another celebration here. A once-empty classroom is now buzzing with excitement at Franklin Middle School. The unused room is now the home to the school's new boat barber shop. The barber shop is a true collaboration between Franklin's PTA, administrative staff, and families. Through donations and sponsorships, the PTA raised funds to help purchase the chairs, the lighting, the cards, the mats, just wonderful partnership. The capes and other supplies for the shop, several local businesses also stepped forward to offer their support, ensuring the shop was equipped and staffed with skilled professionals. The school plans to have a barber shop, um, the barber shop open at least two days a month, providing free haircuts to the students. So, a huge appreciation to all of our community partners for their time and support of the students there. Over at Jefferson, we have a few staff honors here. We would like to congratulate Jackie Simones and Suzie Geider from Jefferson High School. Jackie has been honored as the Iowa High School Athletic Directors Association Administrative Assistant of the Year, and while Geider has been named a Sports Medicine Professional of the Year by the same organization. They will be honored at an event in March of next year. Congratulations. Well, another congratulations goes out to our very own Board of Education. The Cedar Rapids Community Schools Board of Directors was awarded the highly prestigious twenty-two, twenty-three Team Achievement Award. Your Board is one of the select thirty who have qualified for this year's award in the current year. The Board's unwavering support and encouragement for individual Board member development has been truly commendable and has led to this wonderful achievement. By attending these learning events led by IASB, a majority of the Board has completed the requirements and an opportunity to continue their growth as leaders of the Board of Education. And just a quick update on Harden and Taft Middle School. So, as you may recall, we made the decision to close the dome portions of the Taft and Harden Middle School last month when the engineers found issues with some of the support beams. And the district has continued to work with the engineers from Raker Rose, Soleimang Architects, and Macomas La Cina Construction to fix the deteriorating external beams. The firms have been working on the beams on the Taft East Dome, which houses the school's cafeteria, the kitchen, the fine arts classrooms. They are installing the metal plates to the wood beams and welding them to the metal anchors that are attached to the concrete footings around the dome. I guess we want to be specific tonight. They are, they're, the work is underway. Crews will continue to work on the Taft East Dome and are expected to begin the same repairs at Harden next week. They hope to have the east domes at both of the schools completed by the end of December, weather permitting. Then they will move on to the domes that houses the gymnasium at each of the building. We also do have the interim portable classrooms. They have been moved to Taft Middle School to help provide additional classroom space for the band, orchestra, and choir. And crews are hoping to have these portable ready for students to use when they come back from Thanksgiving. And so, we do want to just say, um, just a huge appreciation to all of our district staff members who have helped to keep this thing moving and to support the campuses. But moreover, to our staff members at both Taft and Harden. They all had to make some accommodations, they had to pivot, and as well as even move some of their classrooms to all kinds of spaces and to be creative. And if you go over and meet with the staff, while it's challenging, they have still kept the students as a major focus. And just kudos to them for keeping students first during this time. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. Are there any other Board reports?
I would, um, if I may. So, just wanted to call attention to the recent school board conference. So, Dr. Grover, I appreciate you recognizing this Board's achievement, but I just wanted to acknowledge the Board and what that actually means. So, for an individual award, a Board member needs to participate in fifteen hours of professional development over the course of a year. So, we actually had five Board members that achieved that. It's the highest number, I think, since I've been on the Board. This is the first time we've achieved the team award, and that requires a majority of our Board to, uh, to actually achieve that. I was really excited because there was three hundred and forty-five districts in the state of Iowa, and only thirty actually achieved that. So, we got to spend about three days with our fellow Board members from across the state, which I think is always a great opportunity. I think I've tried to participate every year that I've been, as many of us have. And it's just a great opportunity to get some leadership training and interact with other, other Board members and really just spend some time together and learn as much as we can about the role that we have. So, I appreciate the district for giving us that opportunity to participate and for this Board for just taking its job seriously and participating in as much professional development as is required. So, that's all.
Thank you, Vice President Tominski. Any other comments about the conference?
I would just add that in my tenure on the Board, I think this is the first time that the entire Board has been present along with the superintendent. So, it was a really great experience to be able to be together, learn together. We have exciting times ahead of us, so it was nice that we could all participate in that together. I would just add to, to the comments about the conference. Part of the conference also included legislative priorities, both from the IASB and from the Urban Education Network. We learned about those while we were at the conference. You'll be hearing more about that frequently in the upcoming months. The legislative session will start in January, so we will be doing some advocacy work based around those priorities from those two organizations. Other comments? We will now hear from those who have requested to address the Board. Ryan, do we have any members of the public that have requested to address the Board?
You do.
How many speakers do we have signed up for public comment?
We have one.
With one speaker this evening, you'll be given five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Reedstrom will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to another speaker. If you have submitted a request to address the Board and choose not to speak, in the interest of equity and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. In order to abide by the open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between Board members and the public during this time except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. The Board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speaker that the Board is unable to address personnel and student matters. There is a process outlined in Board policy which provides guidance on how to address and resolve concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speaker to please state your name and address for the record when called to the podium. And Ryan? You're fine. Brian, could you introduce our first speaker?
Laura Pelitsky?
Pelitchek.
Pelcher. Or Pelcher.
Okay, my name is Laura Pelitchek, and my husband and I reside at four three zero Liberty Drive Southeast. Thank you, School Board members, for allowing me to be heard and for your commitment to removing all books that did not comply with Senate File four nine six by the end of the calendar year. My cohorts and I will be watching and holding you accountable to this task. It will be equally important to review all books added to the school library on an ongoing basis to make sure that all books are free of sexually explicit, vulgar, and violent words and graphics in compliance with this law. Since our last meeting on October twenty-third, I have been troubled by your mission statement, "Future Ready." I'm curious, "Future Ready" for what? What is pornography making, what is pornography making our school-aged children ready for? Because decades of studies from respected academic institutions have demonstrated significant and devastating long-term impacts of porn conception on the individual, on individual relationships, and on society in general, and we should care about this. The books I'm talking about are not literary material such as To Kill a Mockingbird and Turning Fifteen on the Road to Freedom, which deal masterfully with important yet difficult topics. These books are porn, and porn changes the brain, and not in good ways. In fact, premature exposure to sexually explicit and vulgar words and graphics can cause devastating behavioral behavioral issues such as stress, anxiety, phobias, depression, PTSD, suicidal thoughts, absences or drops in school grades, nightmares, bedwetting, self-harm, aversion to intimacy, and violence. Again, I ask, "Future Ready" for what? Porn changes the brain and harms the development of the child by craving more and more and more to get the same results, demanding new and elevated forms of pleasure up to the point of violence, overriding our brain's natural function, warping what we perceive as exciting, making real intimacy seem less interesting by comparison. This is called novelty. Craving, demanding escalation, warping of one's perceptions, sound familiar? It sounds a lot like addiction to me, because it is. Porn affects the drain, like, uh, the brain like a drug. We all know that drugs affect learning, attendance, mood, and relationships. Porn, not unlike alcohol, marijuana, and tobacco, impedes the ability to disrupt unhealthy patterns and control impulses. This is not conducive to learning or the development of producing responsible, educated individuals. Then I ask myself, how do porn, self-esteem, and educational development connect to produce future-ready students? Porn normalizes sexual objectification, which occurs when people perceive others as sex objects rather than complex human beings deserving of dignity and respect. Reducing people to physical terms and self-serving labels is the exact type of objectification that sets the stage for sexual violence and low self-esteem. As I said before, porn impacts mental health and fuels loneliness. Dr. Gary Brooks, a psychologist of thirty years, says, "Anytime a person spends much time with the usual pornography usage cycle, it can't help but be a depressing, demeaning, self-loathing kind of experience." Porn habits create isolation, which can lead kids to skip out on interacting with friends, participating in hobbies, or connecting with people in their lives. The very nature of pornography usage leads to an ongoing pattern of self-concealment, which is when people do things they're not proud of and keep it a secret. We're talking about shame. And from my experience, shame turns a person inward, hurts relationships, and leaves them feeling lonely, and can also make them more vulnerable to mental health issues and being groomed for sex trafficking. All of these things connect, but not in a good way, and certainly are not conducive to educational development and future readiness. It is my understanding that the buck stops here with you, Dr. Grover, that you are the one who signs off on, uh, every material that comes into our school libraries, and I implore you to thoughtfully and prayerfully consider the devastating implications of these particular books for the educational development of the youth you all are representing. Thank you for your time. I'll email you a copy of my sharing and look forward to your response.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, are there any items that a board member would like to pull for comment, question, or separate vote? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? This is a roll-call vote due to the personnel report.
Vice President Tominski. Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Ontree.
Aye.
Director Byers. President, uh, Garlock.
Aye. The last item on the agenda is an update on certified student enrollment. I'll turn the meeting over to Craig Barnum and his team.
Unfortunately for you, you'd only get me. So, my teams, the rest of my team, which is far more talented than I'm, uh, we'll talk about this, but, uh, we're gonna spend just a couple of minutes digging in on, uh, certified enrollment. As always, go ahead, and, um, I guess I've got the remote here. I always want to ground our work right back into our, into our vision statement, which is every learner, future-ready. And as I do that, I want to also connect it up with... Come on, Justin, don't leave me hanging here, man. Our strategic plan. There we go. The irony of the, of the, of the information services guy having tech problems never, never gets old. Um, so, our third pillar in our strategic plan that we're, that we're working on right now is, you know, to stabilize the district and, and really work on increased enrollment. And there's gonna be a lot of data I'm gonna share with you tonight, and some of it's reasonably complex. Uh, I'm gonna try to give you kind of a whole-part-whole. I'm gonna overview the whole thing. I'm gonna hopefully leave abundant time for questions at the end, but if, certainly if you have a question along the way, please don't hesitate to jump in and ask if you need clarity or, you know, some of the, the jargon gets a bit much. As we get into it, uh, again, I want to dig right into that, that overview. We're gonna look at kind of the mechanics, what I call the mechanics, kind of the how it works and the terminology around it, because some of that's really confusing. We're also gonna dig into the actual enrollment figures. We're gonna look at, 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 at kind of where we stand at a high level. And then we're gonna look at some open enrollment trends. We're gonna, we're gonna then kind of wind it down with, uh, the impact of the educational savings account on our enrollment, and then some things we're considering as we move forward. And of course, then I'll give you some time to answer any specific questions you may have. So, with that, I know we haven't probably done a lot of work around enrollment for, uh, a couple of years. So, again, the terms are kind of confusing, and we're gonna dig in with those right now. But just to level-set and just to start off, um, you have to understand that our certified enrollment, uh, designates, uh, the bulk of our general fund spending for our kids in our district. And that comes out to, I think this year, uh, the number I came up with was seventy-five ninety-eight, and Carla, tell me if I'm wrong on that. She'd be the one who would, who would know more than I would, but I, that's the number I was able to find. Um, so, each kid comes in at that when they come out at one-point-oh FTE. Now, though, of course, the way the state does this is they're gonna wait some kids more than others, and so we have kind of a weighted FTE funding model, and we'll get into that here in just a minute. Uh, the other thing that's kind of interesting about the way we do it here in Iowa is that we snapshot the data, and the data is snapshotted on the first Monday of October every year, which means if a child shows up, uh, this year, the act, uh, the first Monday was October second. If a child showed up on October third or the fourth, we don't get funding for that child unless we keep them through the next school year and capture them on the next first Monday. So, it's kind of a snapshot. It's a big-dog deal. It takes a long time to sort of reconcile this across the board, too, because we all have to agree, the entire state agrees, we have unique identifiers for every kid, and we all have to kind of agree who's got which kids. And so, it takes, in theory, uh, we've got until the fifteenth, and then honestly, they don't get the data actually ready to go, the DE doesn't, until early November, and that's why the, the, the presentation is in November this year. Uh, I would have loved to have shared the data, uh, a little earlier. Uh, when we dig into this actual next chart, there's gonna be a couple of things that I, that I know are just gonna, you're gonna be, they're, they're kind of head-scratcher's. We're gonna show a line, a trend line, for something called "Actual Enrollment." Now, the temptation would be to think that this is enrollment that is actually our kids, but that's not how the state presents it. Again, this is state terminology, not mine. Uh, and what this actual enrollment number represents is all of the school-aged children who live in our footprint, okay, that are enrolled somewhere, all right? Whether it's in Cedar Rapids, College Community, Lindmar, uh, in a faith-based system, or a non-private or a homeschool. Okay, so, that's the actual enrollment number. Again, I talked to you already a little bit about the weighted enrollment. Again, you know, uh, some kids count a little more than others, some kids count a little less. For example, preschool kids count point-five. Uh, and then I've, I've got a headline trend, or head, headcount trend line data in there because that has real impact on things like facilities and staffing. Because, just because, you know, the kid has only counted at a halftime FTE or a little less FTE, we still usually need to, we don't usually, we have to find a way to serve them. Okay? So, all those numbers come in, and here's kind of the drumroll moment right here. Here's the first, great, look at the data. And the first thing I'll point out is right out in the upper corner, good news, great news, in fact. We're up forty-five and, oh, actually, forty-six and some change. That's a terrible word to say. Forty-six and, and some FTE children. And that's fantastic because that reverses, uh, a trend as long as I've been with the district, and this is starting year six where we've been declining each year. Now, granted, I've been in some pretty challenging circumstances. My, my tenure's overlapped with, uh, the COVID, uh, pandemic and the derecho and, and a whole number of other things, but it's really good news that we're not down again. Um, so, this is fantastic that, that we're up. But, as you can see, kind of the overall trend data, it's not an awesome trend. Uh, if you look, the top line is that actual number I shared with you earlier. Uh, that's the total number of school-aged kids who are enrolled somewhere that live in our attendance footprint. And then the, uh, yellow line indicates weighted, green indicates headcount. And those numbers are reasonably close-aligned, um, but you can see there is a bit of a difference. We tend to do come out a little higher with the FTE, which is actually good news because that means a little more revenue for the district. All right? So, I'm gonna take a quick pause right there because that was a, that was a lot of context to absorb in a very short amount of time. So, with that said, I'm gonna take a pause break and see if there are any questions in, in the room.
I mean, do you want to just share with us, like, weighted? You know, I mean, so it's not one-point-oh FTE. I think that's probably the first time some people have heard that, right? We've seen this presentation as board members in the past, but can you maybe just explain?
Yeah, so, uh, ELL kids, for example, would be weighted a smidge more, uh, depending on where they're at in that cycle. Uh, as I said earlier, um, voluntary preschool program kids are weighted point-five.
Can you describe why?
Why they do that? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank, thank you. I'm sorry. Yeah, that, that's a great clarification. I'm into the mechanics, I'm into the how and the numbers, you know, that's what I want to do. Uh, no, I, the reason why they do that is it largely comes out, for, for example, like, ELLs are a pretty good example. Those kids would, it, the, the theory of action behind it is those children would require a bit more resourcing, and so this is a way to normalize that because they require some special instruction, special materials, et cetera. And on the flip side, with, you know, uh, our preschool kids, um, sometimes they're not here all day, you know, I, I think there's also, uh, I don't know, I don't want, I don't want to get into the, the philosophy on why, why else you might do that that I might disagree with.
Just want to add one thing there on the weighting, just to be clear, that we're, we're talking about the amount of funding that we're receiving.
Correct.
Like, with the preschool, which is a great point of advocacy, uh, as, and I think is one of the legislative priorities that we'll be going for, we're only receiving half of the amount of money. That point-five means that we have to pick up the other dollars somehow in order to be able to fund preschool, opposed to it coming down from the state. That's what that point-five means.
Yeah, thank you for the drive, bright-through line on that, Dr. Grover. Other questions? Thank you. Director Tominski? Okay, well, I'm gonna give you more data. Here we go. This is kind of how we break down headcount across the, uh, grade levels, or, I wouldn't say grade levels, but building levels, so, uh, high, middle, and elementary. Again, um, what we're seeing here is sort of a, a trend that's not as, as good as we'd like, but the good news is we, we do have an upward tick at our high schools. We're kind of stable-ish at our elementaries and middle schools, but we have, do have contraction there. Frankly, uh, we would like to see that trend on its head. Just from a financial standpoint, it, it, uh, if we could grow more at the elementaries, that tends to be a little bit of a better, uh, healthy indicator for a financial system. And we'll get into that here in just a bit more, uh, and, and a bit more. But you can see, we're up, uh, we're up roughly eighty, I think it's eighty-two kids at, uh, headcount at the high school, and we're down twenty-two at the middle school and fifteen at the elementaries. So, given the overall numbers, reasonably stable. Here's kind of some of the bad news. This is our open and rolled-out trends, our open enrollment trends, but really, the open and rolled-out is the bad news. This is, this represents, uh, you know, just about ten years of data, and the trend line's pretty clear. We've got more kids leaving us, and by the way, when I talk about open and roll-out, it's really important to understand that the open and roll-out piece, that means they're going to another public school district in Iowa. That doesn't include kids going out to other faith-based or, um, non-pub options. This is, these are our kids who are leaving us to, to attend one of our, um, I'm just gonna call it what it is, competitors. So, Lindmar, College Community, Marion, et cetera. If you look at the trend, one of the things that might pop to you is that, uh, despite the fact that we're up forty-five kids, we actually, uh, have, have, um, a trend that's not so good here, where we're, we've lost more kids this year to that than, than we have in, in previous years. I think it's, you know, it's up well over a hundred, and that's, that's not a great trend. And so, we're gonna have to get serious about that. You can also see the trend for the students who have opened and rolled in, that would be represented by the green or the, that sort of aqua line, and that stayed almost steady, rock-steady, right around, you know, plus or minus twenty around four-hundred for the last ten years. It would sure be nice if we could get a movement on one of those up or down, uh, in the right direction for us. Again, I'll pause here for questions. Yeah, Director Humbles.
Go ahead, Director Humbles.
When the open enrolled out, do we contact the families to see why, in fact, they chose to, um, open enroll out? And I know they're staying, I mean, they're at Cedar Rapids, and have, have we checked that?
Yeah, I, I believe the open and roll-out process, they have to apply to do it, and I do believe we asked that question, but I think there, I think this, and this will be part of the considerations piece at the end here. I think that's a process that probably bears further investigation, probably some refinement. So... Is there another question?
Yeah, I have a, I have a quick question. We picked up some additional students in our high schools.
Yes.
A similar question in, in the opposite. Do we have any idea where those kids are coming from?
Based upon this data, it's kind of tough to, to infer that. Um, what, what the, what the data would suggest, if you, if you look at that actual enrollment line, uh, on that first slide I showed you with the, the trend graph, uh, the inference I would make there is we had people move in. Uh, we have a higher number of people moving into the, the area, and, uh, so we kind of grew in that, in that regard, so...
Would those, uh, what was it, forty-five or forty-six students, are they evenly distributed throughout the high schools?
Uh, that I can't answer.
Okay.
Right off the top of my head. I can sure get you that information, but I don't, I don't have that. I don't have that on, on the top of my head. I can tell you that at our high schools, I mean, the, the enrollment trends are pretty, are pretty, um, they're pretty clear. I mean, you know, Kennedy continues to be our by-far largest high school, followed, you know, somewhat closely by Jefferson and then trailing Washington. So, we haven't seen, I, I, I wouldn't see anything that, that would suggest this, this data is skewing those trends. Again, I'll give question time at the end, too. You may have reflections after seeing a little more. Now, the thing that everybody's most interested in, maybe, at least I was when we did this round-of-state reporting, was the ESAs, the Educational Savings Accounts, and how they impacted our district. First off, this is the first time this data's ever been collected. We had no insight into this in previous years unless we were gonna do it ourselves. The state didn't provide it because they weren't doing it. Okay? So, this is just a, a representation in a bar graph of kind of where our kids are going, um, who are not here. Now, a, a lot of these kids have never attended school in Cedar Rapids schools. I mean, they've just gone there. So, we've not had insight into this. This is kind of interesting data. And honestly, the, the, the place most of our kids are going, uh, I shouldn't say most, uh, the, the biggest taker of our kids right now would be Sir Isaac Newton. It's a surprise to me. I wouldn't have guessed that. Uh, but what wouldn't, what didn't surprise me was seeing Xavier St. Pius, St. Matt's, Trinity Lutheran, and La Salle, and Cedar Valley Christian, bang, 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 all pretty close-ordered after that. And then diminishing down for some of the others. But, as you can see, there's a pretty strong trend toward the faith-based education option here, and I, and again, I, I don't think that's probably particularly surprising, giving our context. The next view is gonna be just a little different take on this data, but this is where I think it also is illuminative of some of the work we've got ahead of us. So, this'll tell us who's going out by grade level. And I'll just draw attention to the, the bottom left of that where we look at the total of kindergarten. We got work to do. We've got work to do there. And that's, and kind of the, 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 the bad news around that is, is that, you know, those are kids we're losing out on funding for thirteen years. And so, we gotta turn that trend, and that'll be something that, that, again, we'll touch upon just a moment in, in the considerations. But, uh, you can see here, we've got a lot of kids heading out, in particular, to the, the parochial systems, for lack of a better word. A few going out to, to some of the others, but, but primarily forty, forty-two, twenty-three, and thirty heading out, um, over there. So, again, interesting data, um, you know, it's data we haven't had insight to, so this is good. This is, now means it's, there's a possibility of actioning on it, and I think that's helpful. So, uh, with that, um, I'm gonna spin us into considerations. And the first one is the one I just touched upon. I think we've got a lot of work, and we've got some rich opportunities for growth in terms of how we think about preschool and kindergarten. terms of how we think about preschool and kindergarten and building pipelines, and really working on kindergarten enrollment. My hope would be that if we could dig into that 203, along with the open and rolled out number, and make a dent there, we could, we could turn this thing after a few years. You know, as my coaching idol Kirk Ferentz would say, you know, you never make a, you never go broke making a profit, and this is a point where if we profited there every year, I think we would be in good shape, and I think that's going to deserve some real intentionality going forward. Not that we haven't been intentional, it's just I think we need to bring it to a different level of urgency. This goes to your point exactly, Director Humbles. I think we also need to do further investigation and, and retention strategy around, you know, why did, why have folks left, not only to inform and fix it, but in hopes that maybe we'll get a few back. And, and I think that's an area of rich improvement for us, and I think we can really get better there. But I think ultimately, it hinges on this third big idea, which is we need to continue our work and the work we're all doing to make Cedar Rapids a destination of choice for all people who live in this area, not just in our footprint. And I think there's opportunity to do that, but there's also a lot of work to do. So with that, I'm going to open it up to more global questions.
Yeah, I have a quick question. So, and to ensure we don't lose more students and keep that upward tick at bay, is there any sort of survey that goes out to current families where you can get a sense of, you know, why they are there, if they are even considering another option, and what we could do to mitigate that?
You know, what we've done the past few years, and I think we're going to revisit with our student services team, is we've done a social emotional learning survey with families. It doesn't kick quite directly at those questions, but I think it hits some, some of that, and, you know, there are some insights I think we could glean from that, but I think, again, some additional intentionality's probably merited.
Director Newman?
In our, in our agenda, we approve the open enrollments or we disprove them, disapprove them. What's within our, our rights or our purview to intervene when we see that? I mean, are we able to ask the question, have, are you unhappy? Is there something that we can do? Like, what, what's within our rights as a district?
Well, at, at the end of the day, I, and I don't want to misspeak, this is really starting to veer into some of Corinne's department's purview, and it's not my area of expertise. So I, if I, if I misspeak, Corinne, put me back on track, all right? But I, you know, my understanding of the new, the new, the existing law and the way it's been layered in as of, you know, last year, when I say new, I mean, within the last, you know, year, is that there aren't really many deadlines. There used to be that districts could put deadlines around when kids, there was open enrollment periods where kids could leave and come, and, and if they came after that period of time, we would have some flexibility in, in, in denying and, and, you know, trying to retain students, but it's my understanding we can't do that anymore. So it is kind of really up to the parents. If the parents want to move somewhere else, they can go, assuming the other district is willing to take them. I do think that, that one of the things we've done, and I think our current process, as I alluded to earlier, I think we do have an exit interview that we, we ask, but again, I, I think that we need to connect that with a series of actions to say, okay, now we've got this information, what are we doing next with it? Right? And, and so I think that's, to me, where the, the real next layer of work is. I, I also think we need to connect this with, with what Director Byers just was suggesting, which is knowing the current state with our families so we can better address some of those issues as well. I think those things kind of dovetail together nicely.
Can you go back to your slide, the, the one that you actually showed, it's like preschool?
This guy right here?
The other one, I'm sorry, the one that had the action items, like the one that said preschool.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
This guy.
Yeah. Do you want to talk maybe a little bit more about, like, preschool and kindergarten enrollment? So to, like, I mean, is, dig a little bit deeper on what, what we can do?
Well, you know, I think, I think the starting point is to really give an, is to give a, is to give a deeper pass, and again, you're getting into areas that, that veer outside my expertise zone, but I, I can tell you kind of what I think. And, and what I think is we need to, to sort of dig in and look again at, at how we, so, so statewide voluntary preschool for this, for the DE allows us to not only have kids that we serve here in our buildings, like at Truman and, and at some of our other buildings, I think Gibson has one, I can't remember off the top of my head, everybody who has, who has a program and serves. But we also have what we call community partners, and we've got, we've got a ridiculous number of these. I shouldn't say that. It's a lot, but we've got 10 or 12. And what we need to do, one, is, is be intentional with those folks, because the way that breaks down is that they get, I think, .9 of that half FTE, and we get only .1 of it, which is fine, but that's because the, the theory of action is they get a little more. I think we need to be intentional with those folks about marketing our schools, about, about building a, and I'll use the word again, a pipeline, saying, hey, we're, we're providing support for this program, we'd like some time to, some airtime to do this. And so that's one real simple thing. But I also think there's a larger conversation to be had around the master facilities plan around this, and a couple of things I didn't touch on, but I, but I will, just because I have the editorial mic now, is, you know, I, I think that we ought to think about as we build new elementaries, are we building space for preschools? You know, are we, are we putting that in? Because if we do that, then again, we not only get that .5, so anyway, we get 13 more years of funding across sports. That's another consideration. That's the kind of work I'm talking about digging in on. It'd be that sort of thing. I, I also think that there's a, a really interesting opportunity with the open enrollment data to look at where our kids are exiting. We've got that data, by the way. I didn't display it up here, and it's, it's actually a little stale, so I didn't, I didn't prep it because it does take some work, and I didn't know the interest. It sounds like there's a great deal. And we can tell, you know, kind of where our kids are exiting, which buildings they're exiting, and where they're going. I mean, the, the DE gives us that. And I think that that data automatriculates back, back, its way back into decisions around the FMP, the elementary side FMP in particular, because I think that's, to me, that's where we really ought to be putting a lot of our energy and, and, and a lot of verve into, into trying to turn that, because I'm, I'm really thrilled our high schools are growing. I hope all of our building levels grow. Don't, don't mishear me, but we, if we can grow at the elementary, we're going to, we're going to really turn this thing around. That's what we have to do.
I appreciate that. I don't want to lose sight on the comment that you made, that first time in six years that number was up.
Yeah.
It's obviously includes the entire time many of us have been on the boards.
I was starting to take it kind of personally.
Yeah.
You know, I, I hadn't overseen this data, but I, I saw it every year, and I kept thinking, ah, what did I do? I came, because the year before I came here, they actually, we grew, and then I got here and, and things went the other way, unfortunately.
And there were a lot of great sessions that I think many of us participated in last week in regard to early childhood education, some of the things that are happening across the state. So it'll be exciting to take that information back and kind of share that with the entire district.
Yeah, I'd love to. Love to see it. Be great.
Craig, I have a question, and I don't expect you to know this right now, but is it data that we could possibly collect, thinking about the full-day preschool, the funding for full-day preschool versus the .5, which really would translate into a half a day of preschool? Like, we currently have full-day four-year-old preschool. If we could get data comparing how many of those kids leave our district?
Yeah.
As they move into kindergarten compared to the rest of the population? Not, maybe not only for this district, but for the entire state? I don't know if that data can be dug out. It, it seems like that would be a good legislative advocacy tool if we had data that said, here, look, when we have full-day preschool, four-year-old preschool, those kids stay with us in our systems.
Yeah, I think that's-
If that's what the data shows, of course.
I, I think that's really an interesting question. We can certainly dig in on some of that. Going out, outside the scope of our district gets a little more challenging because, you know, we, we don't have, we don't own the data set, right? The, the DE does, and sometimes there's, there's identifiable data that they're, they're unwilling, for very good reason, to give up. But we certainly can get that information internally, and I think that, that, again, I'm going to go back to pipeline conversation to me, you know, we ought to be really working with folks to, particularly with our community partners. But I'd also, the flip side, I wouldn't say flip side, but another dovetail thought I have, as you're talking about that, that, that has wound its way into some of our strategic planning around this, is I think it's also probably worth a little deep, a bit of a dig into the achievement around that as well. And my suspicion would be, because the, the overarching research would tell you that, that dollars invested here are very well spent, and I suspect our data, I hope our data tells the same story. I can't tell you that right now, but I think that's a rich invest, that's a rich research question that I'd like to dig in more on, too.
Thank you, Craig, for your presentation. Any more questions?
I actually did have another quick question. Is there anything that, I'm young children, so I'm very much in this headspace. When it comes to preschool, having that time, that full-day option allows parents full-time employment?
Yes.
So is there anything you do to, or anything we're doing currently to make that point, to, you know, strongly convey that that also is good for the workforce and all of the other things? What does that look like for the district?
I, I think we can do better there. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think, I think, I think when we opened Truman, I think that was certainly part of the, the major emphasis and the push behind it, and particularly with the populations that, that we were sort of hoping to, to bring in, some of the typically underserved populations. But as with anything, I mean, it's iterative, we need to get better at it. I think it's a very compelling argument. I think there, I think there is a strong economic developer, development argument embedded in this as well, so.
And a quick follow-up. You mentioned the half .5 for non-English speaking students and others that fall into the category where it's weighted. Is that the same .5, or do you-
No, no, no. And, and this is where I, I, I'm so sorry, I flooded you with, with information there, and it's easy to get confused.
Okay.
So it's our preschools that are, are only weighted .5. Our ELL kids are actually weighted more like 1.2.
Okay.
They're actually, they actually get additional weighting. And, and some of this is true also for, let's say, kids who take PSEO courses in high schools. We get a little extra waiting for high school and career college readiness courses because it takes a little more to teach those. So there's just this, there's a myriad of things. I didn't bring that list because it gets down into the weeds.
No, totally fine. And new board member here, so, but I was-
It's all good. Great questions.
Specific to preschool, I guess, so I was just wondering.
Yeah, so preschool, preschool is really the only one I can think of off the top